Thank you, Dr. Willamy. Good afternoon. Susan Willis, Chief Financial Officer, and to my right, Addie Lowell, Budget Director for the District, here to answer the meat of the questions that you might have today as we give our Fiscal Year 21 Budget Development Report. So, again, good afternoon, President Logan and Superintendent Thompson, members of the Board. We are here to give you a quick update on what we know related to Fiscal Year 21 Budget Planning. And we'll start with the slide that we've presented to you a couple times now, which is our revenue and fixed cost estimate from before the COVID-19 outbreak. So, we had, as a refresher, we had estimated revenues based on the increase to base aid from 4436 per pupil going up to 4569 per pupil, which is in statute. And that was a 3% increase. Our revenues will be under that amount because of declining enrollment. So, we had given you kind of that history of how we developed this almost $9.3 million revenue estimate. We had also given you some information related to our fixed cost expectations for Fiscal Year 21. The primary driver here was transportation increases at around $6 to $6.5 million, and the remainder were kind of the normal players that we see with fixed cost utilities, insurance, some of our contract consumer price index increases. So, we had kind of come to a resting place that we were going to need to find a little bit of revenue for, to cover the shortfall of about $200,000. And then, we would need to do some, take some actions beyond that if we wanted to do and meet other educational needs. So, this was all kind of pre-COVID-19 planning. So, as Dr. Thompson indicated, we are definitely seeing a lot of impacts related to the pandemic that we had, we could never have anticipated. And certainly, our budget planning process has been impacted as well. So, certainly, the revenue picture in the state of Kansas has been impacted dramatically, probably more dramatically than at any other time in history. And we're going to go through a little bit of what we've learned here in the past two weeks. We don't know how federal stimulus dollars in the different forms of packages might come into play. We do have one piece of information, but guidelines are still coming in. We just had another release from KSDE about the CARES package today. So, we're still learning more, and we'll be bringing to the Board some of those details as we get them. But some, that revenue side of the picture has become a little bit unclear, a little uncertain. So, we might need to back off some of those earlier estimates, retrench, and bring you back some additional information as it becomes available. The fixed cost increases, we know at this point at least, transportation in its historical footprint wouldn't change, but as we start to address what school will look like in the fall, we may be able to come in with some additional information or strategies around those fixed costs. Again, a lot of unknowns related to what school looks like in addition to what our revenue picture looks like. So, we're kind of doing, are dealing with two different sides of the coin. We have some uncertainty related to revenues, and now we have uncertainty related to what fiscal year, the 2021 school year, might proceed. So, this is unusual in that we have actually two kind of paths of uncertainty that we're trying to deal with when planning Fiscal Year 21. And so, that leaves this big unknown picture and what we have to work with for Fiscal Year 21 at this time. But what we can share with you today is that we do have at least some information on the state's revenue picture. And I want to show you two charts. The first chart on the left is how the state general fund receives its revenues. So, 51% of what the state drives in form of revenues to its general fund comes from income taxes. 32% comes from retail sales, 6% from corporate income tax, another 6% in compensating use, and then a smattering of other types of taxes and fees. But the bulk of it, so 83%, are income tax and retail tax. And those two sectors of revenues have been dramatically impacted by the closure of businesses. What happened, the state of Kansas has a consensus revenue estimating group that meets annually to forecast what these tax revenues are going to be for the state so that then the legislature and the governor can build budgets around what those expected revenues are. So, then they take their revenue estimates, and they can build the planned expenditures. And they did that last November, and the darker green bars show you where those revenue estimates were last November for Fiscal Year 20 and Fiscal Year 21. The lighter green bars are the estimates that the consensus group came to the table with just this past April 20th, and you can see dramatic reductions in both Fiscal Year 20 and in Fiscal Year 21 as far as the anticipated impact of COVID-19 on the state's revenue streams. In fact, over those two years, they are anticipating almost $1.3 billion less into the state coffers than originally anticipated last fall, which is a significant drop for sure, but the speed of which it's happening is also pretty dramatic. Those estimates were based on just a few weeks of data at that point, and what we did see with the end of April figures was that their estimate, at least for April, was within 1/10 of the actual number that came in. So, they were pretty spot-on with their estimates. So, at least at this point, barring other events, the $1.3 billion reduction appears to be a pretty solid number. Again, we're going to learn more month over month as we go through the various phases of recovery and what that looks like for the revenue picture. Looking at this a slightly different way, we took a look at where the state was projecting its ending cash balances in the general fund. In this, for Fiscal Year 19, so June 30, 2019, the state did have a surplus of funds available for use. And as we went into Fiscal Year 20, that was anticipated to continue. The state was anticipating a surplus of $926 million at the end of Fiscal Year 20, so June 30, 2020. That was the original plan, was for the state to end well into the black. However, with the COVID situation, we are now, the state is now estimating those revenues to end at $200 million, so a over $700 million drop in just three months. And then, as they go into Fiscal Year 21, where they had anticipated a surplus of $730 million, they are now anticipating a deficit of $653 million. And again, those estimates were based on about two or three weeks of data when they came to the table with those on April 20th. That's an 8.1% budget shortfall to the state's budget based on Fiscal Year 21 budgeted expenditures. So, it is a significant issue as we go into Fiscal Year 21, at least as far as where the state believes they're going to end the year. So, why does this matter to school districts? And why should we be watching what the state does next? And if we, we only have to look at the budgeted expenditures in the state's general fund to understand that answer. K-12 accounts for 52% of the expenditures in the general fund. So, if the general fund is short and has to figure out, the governor and legislature have to figure out a way to cover that shortfall, 52% of that is K-12 education. 11% is higher ed, 26% human services, 6% public safety, and then again, a smattering of other items. But certainly, the bulk of it is K-12. And kind of as we take that information and scale it down to us, we're going to kind of take you back a little bit into some of our budgeting 101 information. I've given you a copy of Addie's fantastic document called "The Budget at a Glance." This is our version of being able to understand school budgeting in an eight-page document, which is saying something, I'm going to tell you. But we're going to cover a couple key slides out of this document to kind of put some context to that $653 million shortfall that the state is going to potentially experience in the general fund. Certainly, the, a school budget should reflect what it costs to educate students. That's its goal, is to tell the taxpayer where these dollars are being focused. When we talk about the revenue side of our equation, we get our funds from three sources: the state, the federal government, and local sources. We get 73% of our budget from state sources, state aid. So, of our $761 million budget, $550 million comes from the state. So, we've talked about this at many Board presentations. As the state's budget goes, so does our budget go. So, it is something we need to be very aware of, how the state is going to react to the shortfall, because so much of our revenue stream comes to us from the state. Even though the 20 mil levy that we levy locally is part of that equation, we still need to be very watchful of this whole process here in these next few months of what the state's going to do to basically fill that hole. When we look at our expenditure side, and this is a reminder kind of of our wheel of operational spending, we purposely focus as much as we possibly can in the classroom, because obviously, that's our core mission. So, 87% of our operational budget is focused on the direct support of students, beyond just the teacher, which of course, is the most critical component, but beyond the teacher, nurses, social workers, librarians, school administration, food service, transportation, utilities, having lights in classrooms, all of that makes up, with instruction, kind of that complete picture of what it takes to educate the student. That 13% of facilities maintenance, which you could argue was also in support of the student, but we don't, we don't reflect it that way, but you could make that argument. And then, business support services and a little bit of general administration. There's not a lot of pie left when you try to protect the classroom from a potential reduction in revenues, because again, reduction in revenues means some sort of adjustment for us on the expenditure side. So, this is just a reminder that we, when we focus dollars on the classroom and we don't get those dollars, those dollars have to come from somewhere. So, we may not have enough flexibility outside of the classroom to hold the classroom harmless. We don't know it yet. It's something we have to watch. Looking at the data just a little bit differently, we have spending in major categories: salaries and benefits, purchase services, supplies and materials, transportation, kind of, these are the big players in our budget. Three-quarters of what we spend are people. So, those same groups that we talked about, nurses, teachers, pairs, social workers, psychologists, speech therapists, the whole gamut of services that we provide our students, 75% of our budget is wrapped up in people. So, when you only have 25% that isn't people-driven, you have, again, limited options on what you can do that don't impact people at some point, depending on the depth of what might come at us. And again, we don't know, we haven't had any information yet as far as what the state's going to do, but these are things we need to keep in mind as we're planning for the what-ifs of all of these factors related to how our budget works today. So, even if you, and then if you add in, besides salary and benefits, the other expenditure categories that do impact the classroom as well: supplies and materials, transportation, utilities, purchase services, you can see, except for bond and interest, there's very little left to go to, to look for additional dollars that we could pull back. And again, just because we're just, we're throwing the kitchen sink at all the different ways to look at our budget, this chart shows a breakdown of the budgets how, by program. So, essentially, all those dollars that we have in our entire budget, where do they go to as far as a program cost? And the half of the wheel is kind of our big four areas: special education, elementary education, middle, and high. So, 52%, give or take, is essentially the core of what we do. And then, you've got another three, three or four larger items that are either restricted federally, so nutrition services, the CAPERS piece, which would be a state restriction, that's that flow-through piece of CAPERS that comes to us and leaves us in 30 seconds that we have to reflect in our budget, the federal grants beyond nutrition services title, and then capital outland bonded interest. So, again, you start to, you start to kind of look at the major cost programs, and you can get to about 3/4 of the way around the wheel before you hit something that we might have that isn't classroom or classroom program-driven. So, again, it, what I think this chart shows nicely is, we are pretty well-balanced as far as our segments: elementary, middle, high, special ed, and some of the federal funds. We have very little flexibility when you get down into all the little programs, and there's just not a tremendous amount of dollars there either, because we are focusing on our core mission, which is the education of students. And then, again, we've shared this before too, when we talk about the funds and where we potentially have the ability to pull back, should we need to, there are certain restrictions on where you can spend certain types of funds. So, in our entire budget, 2/3 of our budget would be considered restricted or targeted to a certain level of spending. So, if we are getting a waiting-for bilingual, we are restricted to spend that on bilingual students. If we are getting a waiting-for at-risk, we are restricted to spend that on at-risk programs. When we get federal dollars for nutrition services or Title I, there are rules and guidelines and statutes that we must follow and mandates that must happen related to those dollars coming into us. So, when we look at flexibility within our budget, only 1/3 of the budget can actually be moved to different purposes. So, again, this is really setting the groundwork, the framework for decisions that might have to be made as we move forward in this process, when we learn more about how the state will address its budget shortfall. Just like our expenses must equal our revenues, the state is in a similar situation. Our state cannot operate the general fund in the red. So, it will have to do something to address that shortfall as it looks towards its Fiscal Year 21 budget. We will, depending on what the steps are and how those roll to K-12 schools, we will also need to make sure that we, our expenditures do not exceed the revenues that we're getting. So, these are the actions that we are starting to look at and plan around as we move forward. What the state could possibly do, so this slide shows state options. The legislature could come back into session, finish out its Fiscal Year 20 session, and look at reducing some spending, if, look at ways to potentially increase tax revenues. They could also look at different transfers. There are some actions that could be taken. The governor can make what's called an allotment, where you, she can reduce some of the expenditures on a very targeted basis, or she could make across-the-board reductions and come up with, say, a $100 million ending balance to carry forward into Fiscal Year 22. So, again, we believe Fiscal Year 20, there probably wouldn't be too much activity in that fiscal year. We are looking probably at some action by the state for Fiscal Year 21. The state probably will want to take into account the federal aid it could possibly be getting. Right now, we know that the CARES Act had some targeted interventions for schools, and we know a little bit about that. We'll be able to provide you a little bit more detail in about, at our next meeting in two weeks. But there are other stimulus packages out there that the state could be receiving, and how much of that ends up then trickling to K-12 or to other areas of the budget, we don't know the answers to that yet, but that will be another piece that we'll be watching through this process, is where those federal dollars land. Again, we know Fiscal Year 20, there won't be a lot of activity primarily because the fiscal year is just about over at this point. So, we only really have the two months left. There's not a lot of maneuverability. Most of those expenditures have been committed and are spent. So, what we do know is that if we have to wait until the beginning of fiscal year, or beginning of the calendar year 2021, when the legislature would meet, starting in January, before we have an answer to what the state might do, that does present us some hardships, because that becomes a mid-year adjustment for us, and we will have made our spending plan, we will have employed people, we will be more than halfway through the year at that point. That becomes very problematic for us to accommodate a potential reduction in revenues because our year is more than halfway over at that point. And a lot of our contracts for services may have already been paid for at the beginning of the year. So, again, we just lose flexibility to answer whatever comes at us the longer we wait for direction. So, we mentioned this, I think, last month, but we have some strategies that we are employing right now, and we have some strategies that we're looking at for Fiscal Year 21, and we wanted an opportunity to tell you, the Board, what, kind of what our action plan is at this point, given there's a tremendous amount of information still to come our way. At this point, for Fiscal Year 20 activities, we are continuing to hold on nonessential spending. We are developing a plan to release some dollars back into the system to prepare for 21, but that, that, we're trying to retain some flexibility within this year's budget to help us potentially address next-year budget issues. So, that, and there are savings, and we've had some talk around utility savings and fuel savings. Those areas are, we're targeting primarily, but we are also looking a little bit deeper into some of the supply chain budgets to, what can we pull back, what has to go forward? And we're trying to come up with a plan to give our schools and our programs direction on how to spend for the remainder of this year, especially while we're still developing plans of what next-year school year looks like. Again, kind of that double-edged sword of trying to plan around two major unknowns and to figure out how we spend our funds. Again, focusing that spending right now on the continuous learning plans. We are recruiting, we are recruiting new staff, but we are really focusing right now on the hard-to-fill positions. The others, we're kind of just in a hold for a moment to see if we can get some more information before we start down a path of filling vacancies that we have in the budget, knowing that that is an option we could look at if we got into some sort of deep reduction So, for Fiscal Year 21, we have various teams working on what the academic year will look like as we move through these phases, and if we have to move in and out of phases as we start the school year. So, a lot of that, those teams' work will kind of drive our budgetary decisions as we move through this process. We are also working, from a budget perspective, on three funding scenarios. The first one is, we receive the new money as anticipated, there's no issues, we expect an economic recovery like we've never seen before, and we just move on down the path. That's a little sunshiny, but that is a strategy that we're going to plan around. The other option might be that we receive no new money, but the state at least gives us as much as they gave us this year per student. That still would be a small cut for us because of our declining enrollment, but it wouldn't be a deep cut at that point, and we have some strategies that we could employ to cover that. As we go down that third option, where we start to plan for a possible cut to base state aid, potentially anywhere from five to kind of really worst-case scenario, maybe up to words of 15%, then we start to map out how we would address some of that kind of deep cutting. And we are in the process of trying to develop a framework of how we get to those cut decisions. So, for those of you, unfortunately, that have been through this before, you know that there's a lot of moving parts to deciding what to, where to reduce and how to reduce and how to engage stakeholders. So, that framework is being developed as we speak, and we'll bring some of that back to you in these coming weeks. Hopefully, we won't have to go down to those levels. That's, we hope for the best, we plan for the worst, that's what we do. We make multiple plans so that when things happen, we are prepared for a go-forward plan right there, as opposed to waiting until it just hits us in the face. We also will be bringing back plans for this one-time CARES stimulus dollars. Right now, we're hearing around $17.3 million would be available to Wichita Public Schools through this stimulus package. But again, we are just now seeing some, some final information coming through to KSDE. I believe there's a 3 o'clock conference call on this today. So, there's, they're still, it's still kind of moving a little bit, but we'll bring back a potential plan for the Board. Keeping in mind that it's one-time money, and so, one-time money is best used for one-time needs as opposed to using it to plug a budget hole, and the Act doesn't really allow for that type of use of money anyway. It's very targeted to technology, supplies to battle COVID-type of, you know, cleaning and those kind of things, those kind of supplies, school, school needs based on the COVID pandemic. So, it has a structure to it as far as how you can spend those dollars. So, we're going to want to spend some time vet through those requirements and kind of come up with a go-forward plan, related, again, to the top item of what our plans are for the academic year. And then, the other thing you might have noticed today, that there was really no purchasing agenda or consent, and that's because we're going to kind of retrench on what we're bringing to the Board for outside purchases, contracts, those type of things. We want to go, put all of those through a kind of a tighter vetting process, not only for potential savings, but also have we reviewed those contracts? What are the terms if we have some sort of shutdown again? So that, again, all of those items are answered before the start of the school year, and we're not, again, just reacting as things happen to us next fall. And I think it will be important that we look at those payment structures and language to vendors as far as protective equipment and all of those questions that are still not decided at this point, but we need to review those contracts and have some information for you as we bring those forward. So, that's kind of why we put a pause on the consent until we put these new procedures in place and we start to vet those just a little bit more carefully, knowing there's a lot of unknowns still coming. So, our budget takeaways for today, Fiscal Year 21 Budget Planning, which had been kind of cooking along pretty well, has become a lot more challenging as the district works on plans for what school looks like for fall of 2020, and it addresses any sort of pass-through due to the loss of sales tax and income tax revenues at the state level that could have an impact on K-12 education, but that have not been announced or any action has been taken yet. So, we don't know that there will be, but we want to make plans accordingly. Again, we're working on those what-if scenarios so that we are ready with an action plan for the Board, and we are sharing today that we have, that our recruiting and spending for, in preparation for Fiscal Year 21, the school year and other needs are being impacted both by the funding uncertainty and by the operational uncertainty, but plans are being made so that we can move forward with what we need to do, when we need to do it. And at this point, we can answer any questions that you might have, hopefully with more than we don't know.
Board members, do you have questions?
Dr. Diana State, can you hear me?
Yes.
I would like for Julie, I would like for her to reiterate when the date of the fiscal year for the state is and when the fiscal year for the 259 is.
So, both the state, this is Susan Willis, Chief Financial Officer. Both the state and the district share the same fiscal year, which ends June 30th.
Thank you.
Ron Rosales, 6th District.
Yes, Ron.
Yeah, I was just wondering, Susan, so when all the students are not in the building, obviously, the buildings are not being used. Is that money saved, or is, it might be minimum, but, or minimal, but I imagine it is money saved if the buildings are not open. What can you speak about that to the public?
Sure. This is Susan Willis, Chief Financial Officer. As part of the, kind of the waiver process that we received from the state in order to complete this school year, we are paying our employees. So, again, we go back to that chart, where, where is the bulk of our spend? It's 75% people. 75% of our budget continues to operate as it has been for the most part. There's some savings in limited areas, but for the most part, our salaries are moving along as anticipated. So, where the savings will occur are lines like supplies. Utilities is the primary one where, primary line we'll save on, because that is a month-to-month bill. So, as we don't have people in buildings, lights aren't on, the air isn't running at its normal, you know, pace, we will experience utility savings, we will experience fuel savings related to transportation. But because of how we spend our dollars and when we spend our dollars, a lot of those contracts for Fiscal Year 20, those were actually paid in full at the beginning of the fiscal year. So, we don't have savings related to maybe a curriculum item or an intervention program. We didn't, we weren't able to cut those off, those dollars were gone. So, for the most part, other than supplies, utilities, and what's remaining in school budgets that we are holding right now in hope budgets that we are holding right now in hopes of saving some of that, because some of the, some of the spending that occurs right now is actually for fiscal year 21 to get the school year ready. We will have some savings. We're trying to carve out as much as possible. We'll have some numbers here in the next few weeks as we come up with a spending plan that we can forecast where we think we're going to end the year.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Reiser.
Stan Reiser, board member. First off, a, kind of a specific question. Is our transportation cost of 3.7% is that comparable to other school districts around Kansas? And I, I realize our district is very difficult to compare to other districts. We're kind of unique in, in our own category, but is that 3.7, is that higher or lower than other school districts?
I, I don't know that I've done a, a by Kansas comparison. We know that the districts that do in-house transportation have a different cost structure than in our case where we outsource. But it isn't, yeah, it isn't, we don't feel it's unreasonable, and if you look at us compared to other large urban districts, we are right where we, we should be, if you will. We do know that we've had that problem for the past five to 10 years, where that contract's actually been undermarket.
Right.
So as we kind of correct here as we move forward, it, that percentage may go up, which, again, might put us a little bit either more in line or less in line with Kansas schools because, again, we look so different, it's a little hard to compare to, say, an And is it fair to say that since we spend a great deal of energy on providing choice
in our district, that our transportation costs may be a little bit higher?
Susan Willis, Chief Financial Officer, they are impacted by choice, yes. Now, some of that, we don't have an option to, to reduce because choice, that choice impacts other areas as far as compliance pieces. So you have to be careful as you go down that transportation venue to, if you want to make changes, we still have to maintain our compliance with, with different rules and, and how we address equitable pieces of transportation, which I can't come up with the term right off the top of my head. But yes, with, we are going to be looking at our transportation footprint as part of those, that fiscal year 21 process, and if we have some options to bring to the table, we will be bringing those to the table.
Stan Reiser, board member. So just, just to simplify this presentation for the, for the public and, and for us, would it be fair to say that our 2021 budget is being driven by the uncertainty of the 2122 budget? And we are looking at three different scenario. One is the sunshine scenario where the economy recovers very quickly, revenues start getting back up very quickly, and we, we basically try to rebound as quick as we can. The second scenario is things return to normal, but there's a slight downtick, and it takes a little longer for the economy to come back up, takes longer for the state revenue to come back up, and we're talking about, but everything basically stays equal, and there, but that means a slight decrease for our budget. And in the third case scenario of the opposite of the sunshine scenario, the disaster where we are talking about major cuts, is that fair to say for the general public?
Susan Willis, Chief Financial Officer, I think the categorization of those plans are correct, but make sure we're talking about those will impact fiscal year 21, so school year 2021 with the potential of creeping into the next school year 22 as well. So it is an immediate impact as we go into fall of 20, what might, what those scenarios might, how those might impact the school year, not a year from now.
Stan Reiser, board member, and that's why I was saying, so 2021 is being influenced by 2122?
I'm not sure I'm following, but I do know, I, what we can tell you is the, the revenue estimates that the state has put out for its ending year fiscal year 20, so 63020 and 63021, we're concerned with the ending balance that the state's going to have at the end of 21. And because our budget for 2020, 2021 is, is contingent upon them being in the black, they will have to reduce their expenditures in 2021 to get back to a positive ending balance. That's why we're concerned with what's going to happen this coming school year, and then ongoing as well, depending on how fast the economy recovers. So not just a year, not a year from now, but really what's going to happen to us this fall.
Stan, if you heard, mentioned, she mentioned maybe a mid-year cut, and that's not, that is something that has happened in the past. So we may have started the school year with the full budget, and then mid-year, which is going into the 21 financial calendar for the, for the state, they may then cut mid-year, which means that we don't, that's not our cut for next year, we have to cut in December.
Right.
So there is a possibility that we will cut in December according to what the funds look like. They would have, they're going to have to do something, we don't know what. But if they do something, that will have us to be able to respond. Hence why, why we are now preparing ourselves for what could happen to us in December. And also, we need to be thinking about what happens to us for the following school year. Does that make sense?
Yes. Stan Reiser, board member. So based off what you just said and what Dr. Thompson just said, we're going to develop this coming year's budget, assuming that we do not have to make mid-season cuts? Or are we going to develop it assuming that we will have to make mid-season cuts?
Susan Willis, Chief Financial Officer, both.
Okay.
We're going to, we're going to work through various assumptions. One is, the state will address its shortfall here in the next few weeks, as far as what is it going to do with its fiscal year 21 budget, and how does that impact us? They, they could address it now and give us a plan for how it's going to happen, and we would have to adjust our budget accordingly. They could wait and address it next January in the next legislative session, and at that point, whatever would come our way would be a mid-year cut, and we need to think through what that looks like now so that we know what it looks like when it happens and what we're going to do. And then we need to start thinking another year ahead of if we go out again, if this raises its ugly head again, and what does that look like for us, and how, what does that impact fiscal year 22? We need to plan for that as well. So to answer your question, we are planning for all those scenarios in this next school year and a school year down the road.
Stan Reiser, thank you.
Just a little bit of a follow-up to that. The budget for this coming year was passed by the legislature before they adjourned before, and they're coming back sometime in April, but they did pass the budget, correct?
I believe that's correct, Susan Willis, I believe that's right.
Okay. And, and, but what we're saying is that a lot of things have changed since they passed that budget.
Correct, that's correct.
And we've got to, and they may come back and say, we recognize a lot of things have changed, and we're going to cut X, Y, and Z, whatever that is. And then we would know a clearer picture of how we have to plan for the next year. But if they don't do that, we still have to plan that they may do that when they come back as the new legislative group in January, correct?
Susan Willis, Chief Financial Officer, yes. I think we need to plan for all of those contingencies, which is, we know what the plan's going to be here in the next month, however they're going to address it, they get back together and they make a plan, or the governor makes a plan, whatever is going to happen, happens soon enough so that we can make decisions and move forward. We have to plan that they don't make that decision, or they think that the revenue estimates are off, or there's another income stream, or federal dollars are going to come, so that they don't have to take action now. If that doesn't come to fruition, what will happen to us in December, January, and we make a plan for that? And we make a plan for, none of that happens, and how do we move forward? So multiple plans depending on those, those points of, of decisions that may, are made beyond us and how we're going to react, yes.
Yeah, Cheryl Logan, they, so really, you're doing almost three different budgets.
Susan Willis, Chief Financial Officer. Addie, how many budgets are you going to be doing?
I anticipate that we'll have probably close to 15 different scenarios in our budgeting system by the, by the end of June 30th, so.
You, you guys are doing yeoman's work. Multiply your normally normal work of one and multiply that by 15. You haven't had a lot of time off, have you?
Uh, no. No, we typically do about seven different scenarios just to start the budget year. And again, remember, we start budget planning for, we started budget planning for FY21 last October. So coming now in April and making adjustments to now have some additional budget scenarios prepared, it's, it's definitely a shortened timeline, and we're, we're grateful for the teamwork we have with district leadership to help us through that.
And we thank you for your hard work.
Thank you.
But the bottom line is, you're getting new information on a daily basis and things are changing accordingly, correct?
Correct.
Okay, one more question, and that is, this is the time of year when we have our teachers retiring and leaving us because they've served their time and they want to be able to go into retirement. Do we anticipate anything changing with our retirements or our people that we normally, because normally we'll have 250 people or so leave our district. Do we expect that to happen again?
Addie Lowell, Director of Budgeting, what we've seen thus far is what I would call maybe a slow in the resignations. So again, with some of the economic uncertainty, I know, I'm not leaving my job anytime soon, so I think we've seen a trend in resignations coming in and, and the timeline that they've done so in years past. So again, it's, it's hard to say with people working remotely what we'll see with retirements, but we'll, we'll plan for normal and we'll plan for, for less resignations as well, so.
Okay.
Susan Willis, Chief Financial Officer. Addie, you had to actually run some numbers, though, that we were, was it 30% behind normal pace? What was, what we were?
Normally, by this point in the year, we are at about 50 or 60% with the resignations being turned in, and we're sitting right at about 30%, so.
So people are holding off on making decisions?
Yes.
And we've actually had some, some data to talk to folks about why, and some of the reasons why is because of the stock market, people's retirement monies have been affected. We've had people to say, you know, spouses may have been laid off or furloughed for periods of time, so it's taking a toll on the household, so they need to continue to work. So this, this pandemic has caused people to pause on retirement, and so we won't know for sure exactly. And I think we do have a date of when they have to finalize that, and that date is?
It's May 29.
May the 29th. And so we'll have a better handle on that at that time.
So just about a month from now, a little less. Okay, other questions? Ben?
Ben Blankley, District 1. For those of us who weren't on the board during the mass cut era of 2010 to, I guess, 2018, basically, what is this relative scale of like a 5 to 15% cut now versus what we, what the district had to go through in 2010 through 2018?
Susan Willis, Chief Financial Officer, so the decline can be compared to the Great Recession 2008, 2009, but the impact over the years, we didn't see quite this level of decline so quickly. That's the real challenge with this particular downturn, is how fast the bottom has dropped and how quickly it's going to impact those state revenues. Now, again, whether that's long-term or whether we'll see a bounce as businesses start to reopen, that's certainly what the consensus revenue estimating group is anticipating in 21. That's why they're not, it's not quite the decline you see in fiscal year 20, but it's still a decline. So the big question for us is, if it, if we have a resurgence and we have to close again, what does that do to the estimates? What does that do to the state revenues? So this is so much more of an unknown and no historical perspective, as opposed to kind of your normal recessionary pressure that happens. But it is comparable over time, but this is a much shorter duration.
Okay, thank you.
And those times were not fun. Any other questions? I'm seeing none. Thank you so much for your report. We, we appreciate all of your hard work and all of your team's hard work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, please.